Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order the March 22, 2016 Watcom County Council Meeting. May we please have the roll call?
Barbara Brenner?
Here.
Red Brown?
Here.
Barry Buchanan?
Here.
Todd Donovan?
He's be here in a sec.
Ken Mann?
Here.
Sat Paul Sidoo?
Here.
Carl Weimer?
Here.
Okay, would you please rise and join me in the flag salute? My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A few quick announcements. If you have your cellphone with you, please put it on vibrate or turn it off. You'll be handing out paperwork to council members, please give one copy to the clerk for our office files. Thank you. Earlier, from Committee of the Whole, we had a discussion and preliminary council direction on Comprehensive Plan Chapter Eight Resource Lands. We also had a discussion with Senior Deputy Prosecutor Karen Frakes regarding potential litigation GPT permit process. Then we also had a discussion in preliminary council direction on Comprehensive Plan Chapter Two Land Use. And lastly, we had a discussion with public work staff regarding potential property acquisition for the flood control zone district purposes. And the council would be acting as the Watcom County Flood Control Zone District Board of Supervisors. Do we have a motion regarding this item?
Mr. Chair, I have a motion.
Yes.
I move we authorize the county executive acting on behalf of the Watcom County Flood Control Zone District Board of Supervisors to move forward with and complete acquisition of the property discussed in the executive session, as long as the purchase price of the property does not exceed the amount discussed in the executive session.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify with a "aye."
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Next, we have minutes. We have nine sets of minutes. And what I would like to do is to move approval of all nine, and then if anyone needs anything pulled out to abstain, we'll do that. So I would entertain a motion to accept these minutes.
I move to accept.
Okay, so Ms. Brenner moved and Mr. Mann seconded. Does anyone have anything they would like removed? Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chair, I'd like Item Seven voted on separately.
Item Seven. Anything else? Seeing none, we'll vote on Items One through Six and Eight and Nine. Any discussion? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Now, will someone like to move Item Seven?
I move approval, Item Seven.
Second.
Then moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstained?
Abstained.
Abstained.
Two abstentions. So that passes five, zero, two. Okay, moving on to our public hearing. Audience members who signed up at the back of the room prior to the beginning of our meeting will be called first. If you did not get a chance to sign up, feel free to come forward and we will allow you to testify. Each speaker needs to state his or her name for the record, and will be given three minutes to address the council. Council staff will keep track of time limits and let you know when you have 30 minutes, and also when time is up. If we have a large group of individuals that supports the same position on issue, we encourage the selection of one or two representatives to speak on behalf of the entire group. Our first public hearing is an ordinance authorizing the temporary reopening of Roberts Road between Martin Road and Central Road for use as a construction detour.
Good evening, council members.
You need to talk in the booth.
Thank you for your time tonight. I'm Christina Schoenfelder. I'm an engineer with the Public Works Bridge and Hydraulic Group, and I can just give you a brief summary of the ordinance we're requesting. The purpose of the ordinance is to temporarily reopen a currently closed section of Roberts Road for the purposes of a construction detour. The road was originally, the section of road was originally closed in 1991 due to problems with illegal dumping. And we'd like the council to authorize reopening the road temporarily for the construction of the Bridge 249 Replacement Project. Bridge 249 is on Roberts Road over Anderson Creek. In 2014, we got about $1.1 million of federal funding to replace that bridge, because it was structurally deficient. So if you look at the map in front of you, you'll see in red the site location, and the section of road in red is the closed section. And the detour for construction would route traffic north along the road, Central Road, down on Mission into Faison. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mr. Sidoo?
Since this road was closed in 1991, is there enough base or enough road when you open it, or are you going to go spend money to rebuild that road?
It's in surprisingly good shape. It would probably take some brushing and some crushed material. We may have to widen a few sections just to allow for vehicles to pass. It's currently a one lane, and that's what it was prior to its closing.
Is that part of the budget for the bridge, or it is an additional expense?
It would actually, the way the funding was sought for this project, they had budgeted for a temporary bridge, so using this as a detour would actually be a cost savings.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we open the public hearing? Okay, thank you. We would now open the public hearing. We have no one signed up. Would anyone like to talk about the reopening of Roberts Road? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. What's the wishes of the council?
I'll move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Excuse me.
This is an ordinance.
Oh, yes, you're correct. Roll call, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sidoo?
Yes.
Carl Weimer?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Okay, our next public hearing is a resolution, a public hearing regarding application for a Community Development Block Grant. Do we have any staff report at all?
He's leaving. She's leaving.
Okay, no staff report. We will open the public hearing. We have a few people signed up. Greg Winter?
Thank you. I'm Greg Winter, Executive Director of Opportunity Council, and thanks for this opportunity to thank the council, county executive, and his staff for partnering with Opportunity Council to provide vital services to rural areas of Watcom County, and also the neighboring counties of Island and San Juan Counties. So this public service, the purpose of this public service grant is to help provide a link between services such as food assistance, homeless housing assistance, early learning services, and other services that are vital for low-income families. And this would be the third year of this partnership between Watcom County and the Opportunity Council, and so I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about this. But I can tell you, roughly based on the past year, each quarter, each calendar quarter, this grant serves about 3,000 low-income persons with those services that I mentioned. And I think in the materials, you can see how that $123,000 grant is apportioned across the three county area, and that's based on the, it's a formula that's based on the population of low-income persons in each county. So a little more than 50% of that amount is going to the services in Watcom County.
Any questions? Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Mary Tully?
This is for Chapter One?
No, this is for the application for a Community Development Block Grant.
I have no comment.
The next person that signed up, I cannot make out your name, but you are a sculptor. I can read that much.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to sign up on that.
Okay.
Happens all the time.
Okay, does anyone else want to speak to the application for a Community Development Block Grant? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Do we have a wishes of the council?
I move approval.
Second.
Well, whatever.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
I guess we're interested.
Now, we're in Chapter One. Our next public hearing is the Watcom County Comprehensive Plan, Chapter One, Introduction and Growth Projections. We have some additional information in the orange copy, council. Do we have anything from staff?
Good evening, council. Mark Personeus with PDS. Just real briefly, this is Chapter One of the comp plan. This is the chapter that sets out the overall population projections for the next 20 years that the rest of the plan has to allocate in Plan Four. In brief, the council has selected a population growth target of about 70,000 people for the next 20 years countywide. It's about another Bellingham. About 84% of that population growth has been allocated to the cities and the urban growth areas, and the remaining 16% or so have been allocated to the non-UGA or the rural areas. At the same time, council has indicated preliminary targets of employment allocation of 37,000 jobs over the next 20 years countywide. 91% of those allocated to cities and UGAs, and 9% allocated to the non-UGAs or the rural areas. So those are the major topics of Chapter One.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Okay, we will open the public hearing. We'll go ahead and start with the folks that signed up on the other sheet. Mary Tully, this is Chapter One. Come on forward.
Hi there. Omea vegan. My name is Mary Tully. So Chapter One, Paragraph Six says, "Private property shall not be taken for public use without just compensation." That always makes me nervous, just private property being taken, and if the just compensation is agreeable to both parties. It doesn't mention like a timeframe in there, so I would hope that a reasonable amount of time would be given to the property owner. Paragraph Twelve says, "Ensure public facilities are adequate to serve the development at the time the development is available for occupancy." I think that that would be a minimum, but what about planning ahead? I would hope that the capacity that a facility could serve would be adequate for the projected lifetime of that facility, so like planning ahead as well. Thank you for calling for the identification and preservation of land sites and structures of historical or archaeological significance. Thank you for adding the goals and policies of the Shoreline Management Act as one of the goals of the Growth Management Act. My favorite part of that act says, "Uses shall be preferred which are consistent with control of pollution and prevention of damage to the natural environment," so I'm glad to see that that's a consideration of our shorelines. Employment Projections says that, "For the purpose of urban growth areas, non-agricultural labor force was considered in the forecast." That made me wonder where agricultural labor was considered, since that's an economic aspect of Watcom County, perhaps considered for the non-UGAs. The Paragraph Four on Housing, encouraging the availability of affordable housing to all economic segments of the population of the state. I wondered if that included the homeless and transient population, and if that was considered in the tables of population growth, and if housing types for them are included. I think that's everything on Chapter One.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So did you have something for Chapter One?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, you didn't, okay.
Okay, Mr. Jack Petrie?
It's appropriate, oh, Jack Petrie, Bellingham. It's appropriate Mr. Winter was here, because the, part of the thing you're trying to do tonight is get rid of his job by getting rid of the need because of low-income people. Anyway, most of you weren't here in 2008 when the county council came into Bellingham and stripped the owners of thousands of acres of property rights guaranteed them by the GMA and your own countywide planning policies. The result of that 2008 process has been a litany of failure. Today, the Department of Commerce reports that Watcom County is the least affordable rental county in all of Washington, and only a single county is worse in percentage of homes for sale at affordable prices. We're the 30th worst of 39 counties for increases in personal income, and have an abysmal record regarding people either in outright poverty or earning less than the bare minimum household survival budget. We're also one of the poorest of Watcom County's major metropolitan counties when it comes to median household income, and the list goes on and on and on. The process you're engaged in is supposed to be a review of how we've done since our last plan, and an update of that plan to correct problems, we find, but an honest appraisal reveals nothing but failure, which is probably why no one is bothering you with facts in this process. The GMA puts the onus for determining population projections and UGA boundaries squarely on your head. Accurate population projections are your responsibility, no one else's, not the city's, no one else's. When you fail in your obligation to establish adequate populations, you fail the people of Watcom County. Low population, insufficient projections have historically meant, and will mean in the future, smaller cities end up saddled with more growth, as does the rural parts of the county, in part because you dumped the projection cities, including Bellingham, and county staff spent three years developing, only to have Bellingham jump at the last second. When you do that, you're creating a walking, talking hearings board challenge, because the people who have been suing you over water for the last few years will just love what happens to the rural part of the county if you keep the projections you're considering. For three straight population cycles, Watcom County has grown faster than projected by the State Office of Financial Management, by 8,800 people, 5,600 people, and 5,500 people, respectively.
30 seconds, please.
Check the U.S. Census Bureau for estimates. It looks like it'll be 7,500 people this time. So the question that has to be answered is, how does planning for another 20 years of the same failures we've planned for over our last two cycles serve the people of Watcom County? You should listen to the unanimous recommendation of the Bellingham Planning Commission, the unanimous recommendation of your own planning commission, and the recommendation of your own interjurisdictional task force, and set rational population projections-
Time.
...and population allocations. That's your primary duty in this process. Thank you.
Next is Ken Callaher.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to address the council. My name is Ken Kalyer. I live in Watcom County, just outside the Bellingham city limits. In addressing Chapter One, and in establishing principles and goals to guide the growth and planning over the next couple of decades, I would like to ask the council members to bear in mind the crucial concept of sustainability. Specifically, I ask you to place the highest priority on sustaining the quality of life in Watcom County, the reasons we were so happy to live here, the reasons we were so proud to have others come and visit us here, and the reasons it's hard to get a teaching job here because teachers don't want to leave. These reasons include a strong agricultural sector, a vibrant local fishing industry, rich forest lands, numerous recreational opportunities, our clean water and air, countless cultural offerings, and many more. The continuous expansion of commercial and industrial development is simply not sustainable if we value our farmland, our clean air and water, and neighborhood communities. Let's put the quality of Watcom County life for us and for future generations before the unrealistic fantasy of endless economic growth and sprawl. Let's make this a community of sustainable excitement. Thank you for your time.
Forgot my glasses, but we'll give this a try. Linda Twitchell, Building Industry Association. I am suggesting this tonight that you please reconsider expanding the Bellingham UGA in two directions and adopting the multijurisdictional recommendation on population projection for Bellingham. What I would like to note is that both city and county, as you know, planning commissions recommended doing this. I am a bit concerned, because I've been to most of your meetings on this, and I have not yet heard anyone give you an analysis or a comprehensive report on why both these commissions recommended an expansion and a higher population figures. Writing the numbers real quickly here, and you can compare yourself on whether this is what you've heard in your reports. The Bellingham UGA is built out, it's full, according to Rick Sepler's testimony last year to the planning commission, and I believe he made a similar comment to you. So we're not looking that way to resolve growth expectations in Bellingham. Infill, according to Mr. Sepler's presentation to the city planning commission last spring, is politically unviable in Bellingham. Don't bet on it to resolve any growth problems, he said. Yet, the PowerPoint you guys saw a month ago had infill as one of the major ways we're going to meet our problems in Bellingham. Most of Bellingham's remaining buildable land is impacted by wetlands or slopes, which makes it either very tough or very expensive to build there. So once again, we're not going to be able to look to that to resolve growth expectations, certainly not in terms of housing people can afford. The city's land capacity analysis includes unrealistic market factors and vacancy rates. The vacancy rate right now in town for homes is essentially zero, and as a result, for rentals, it's almost, it's essentially, the realtors tell us it's 1% to 2%, it's essentially zero. Yet, the Bellingham comp plan, the land capacity analysis, doesn't include any vacancy inflation factor, but the comp plan suggests that in the future 20 years, we're going to have a 4% to 7% vacancy rate instead of zero. How are we getting there? Have you heard anybody explain that? Urban villages, you've probably heard this before, targeted for 70% of the growth in Bellingham in the next 20 years, although market research, reliable market research shows us that 76% to 80% of people do not want to live in multifamily-
30 seconds, please.
-dirt housing. The city's land capacity analysis did not figure in wetlands or pipeline buffers, and stream buffers in Bellingham may be up to 250 feet wide. Using the county, or the land capacity analysis figure, that was only 25, so figure there's a lot of land there, that we may be overstating what it can support. And the land capacity analysis basically was unduly influenced by capital facilities implications. The cost of meeting existing deficiencies, which is the real reason, I believe, that the city, the old city council and that the city planning staff are recommending lower population numbers. My suggestion is, please take a practical look at this and see if indeed we are going to be able to meet the population projections, given the information that has gone to your commissions. And if you don't trust me on it, call them in and ask them to talk to you about it. Thank you.
Wendy Harris, before I started, I'd like to answer Linda Twitchell's question about why the planning commissions all recommended more growth. It's because most of the people on there are members of the development community, and that's what they favor. So it's not a mystery to me. I don't understand why it's a mystery to anybody else. Councilmember Mann, I was here earlier, and Councilmember Mann raised a valid point in raising concerns about the wetlands and floodplains in the Birch Bay UGA Reserve. The reason this was not considered previously is because the staff did not provide information reflecting the overlap of critical areas with UGA areas and reserves. I know this because during the last rural area update, I made specific inquiry and was shocked to learn there was no attempt to reconcile areas targeted for growth with the location of critical areas. It's also no coincidence that we're now proceeding with our comp plan update without, piecemealing it from the CAO update, and the GMA expects them to be considered together. So whereas the GMA directs counties and cities to direct growth away from areas with significant critical area constraints, we're not doing that. And that's before you even consider problems with water quality and quantity, or the fact we have failed to identify and protect habitat corridors, and we lack the ability to identify our non-fish-related habitat conservation areas. I request that the council review the proposed UGA and reserve areas with an overlay of a map of all five types of critical areas. I think that you'll find that many of those UGA reserve areas are inappropriate places to send growth. This indicates a fatal flaw with the land capacity analysis, which is supposed to exclude critical areas, yet these same excluded areas seem to find their way back into our UGAs. That's not supposed to happen. The U Street UGA is several kinds of critical areas. Kaitak, Birch Bay, and Blaine are located in wetlands and floodplains, and I suspect that Lyndon has critical area aquifer, area problems. Developers love to allege that the land capacity analysis understates land supply. I actually agree with them.
30 seconds, please.
However, they also assume the only solution is to increase the land made available for more growth. That's not actually the only solution that the GMA provides to us. The GMA also allows for a lower growth projection. Because our shortage of land is not going to decrease with time, the only logical solution is to reduce overall population growth. We cannot grow beyond the land's capacity to sustain life.
Time.
We're simply out of land, and therefore we must adjust our expectations for the future. Please reduce the overall population projections to the lowest level allowed under the OFM numbers. Thank you.
Okay, that's the end of the signup sheets. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to Watcom County Comprehensive Plan, Chapter One, Introduction and Growth Projections?
Thank you. John McLaughlin, Bellingham. In my January report to you, I showed why, first, thank you for patiently considering public input on this and all the future meetings you're going to be in. In my January report to you, I showed why the projections in the Chapter One draft were not reliable and obtained using invalid methods. And instead, I gave you reliable projections using valid mathematical models fit to the county's own data. Projections in the February draft before you now changed slightly, but they're still not reliable, and they're still derived using invalid methods. They'll exceed the actual growth with 82% probability, and they'll exceed the most reliable projection by over 10,000, or 17%. Quoting from that latest chapter, page 1-10, the county's 2036 population projection- Quoting from that latest chapter, page 1-10, "The county's 2036 population projection of 275,668 is within OFM's range and therefore requires no further justification. Given the costs and the consequences involved, no justification is simply not acceptable." And so I'd ask you to please explain to me and to the public the actual justification for using an erroneous projection, if you choose to go with this. And I'd like to devote the balance of my three minutes to allow you to ask me anything about my analysis of Burke's projections, or about the projections I developed. If you have no questions, then I'm going to simply have to assume that you agree that Burke's projections are invalid, and that mine are the most reliable. And the ones you've got in your draft are just simply not the basis for responsible planning. So I look forward to at least a brief discussion, and anything you may have to say or ask.
Mr. Donovan.
Can you, in like, really simple language, explain, you're working with different lag terms or something in the models that you're using?
I'm simply using the data, and fit a set of models, standard population models, to the data, and they all converged on fairly similar numbers, despite different assumptions and variables in those models.
Okay, there was, I was trying to follow something about the way you were, you were saying something about the method that was different that was producing these things, and something to do with how you're working with time series data, or how you're using lag?
Yeah, so our data are time series data, we grow through time. And so what I did is I looked at those data and saw that there's inertia in those data, to use a non-technical term. And so I considered models that considered inertia, and they give very different results than models that assume will grow without limit, and without any relation to the past. So I, basically what I did is, what any population biologist would do, is to look at the data and see what kind of population we have, and then to let the data drive, well, allow us to predict what's going to happen in the future. And what your, the projections you've got in your draft don't do that. They contradict the data.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else like to speak on Chapter One? Seeing no one, we will close that public hearing, and we will go to the next one, which is Watcom County Comprehensive Plan, Chapter Four, Capital Facilities.
Oh, on, is this now open, before we go to that, is this time for us to?
No.
No, okay.
But that is the right version.
That was good, that was very good. So, we're having a hearing for the public, but not for us to work on our questions?
No. We're just taking input.
Okay, that makes it simple.
Okay, the next one is Watcom County Comprehensive Plan, Chapter Four, Capital Facilities, and council, we'd be following along on the yellow substitute version. We have some folks signed up. Jack Petrie, come on down if I call your name. Mary Tully, Nora Weaver, and Edward Yuri.
Jack Petrie, Bellingham. I mentioned earlier that what we're trying to do with growth management is get rid of Mr. Winter's job. I'm not trying to fire him. What I'm trying to say is that our job under growth management is to do the best job we can of making sure that everyone who wants a good job can find a good job, and everyone who wants affordable housing can find affordable housing. If we can do that, then we don't have to do huge subsidies. We don't have to do all sorts of things that we'd rather not do. We'd like to enable people to have good jobs and good housing. Well, none of that happens without adequate capital facilities. You, I have told you in other contexts, that for instance, Bellingham is only achieving 21% of the jobs growth in the county, when you assign them over 60%. Part of the reason is, there's no capital facilities available on a good part of Bellingham's jobs land. People who want to move to our county and provide good jobs and such, don't want to say, "Hey, I'm here," and have us say, "Hey, we can get you a permit in under 10 years." People who want to move to our county want to have an opportunity to get up and moving very soon, and that's one of the reasons Bellingham isn't able to capture jobs growth. Nothing is workable without capital facilities, and I won't subject you to anything long. I've sent you a piece of testimony on capital facilities, and I'd appreciate it if you would read it. But I do have, I did notice one thing. Whatever happened last year, you went through a long process in which you saved the activity centers from being removed from the level of services in the county, and it seems like they're gone again. And I think you maybe want to pay attention to that. Thank you.
Mary Tully. Then Nora Weaver.
Good evening again. Chapter Four, to me, this chapter read kind of strange. The beginning, it says that it's looking to establish levels of service, but if there's a lack of funding, options could be raising taxes a reasonable amount to meet the level of service, or lowering the level of service, or curtailing the growth to limit the demand for that service. That being the situation, I feel kind of pessimistic about establishing levels of service to begin with, if they can be lowered, but I know it's a complex thing to balance. Goal 4A crosses out planning level of service standards and replaces it with planning appropriate facilities commensurate with the ability of the county to fund them. I'm glad that reviewing the state sentencing laws is a factor in determining the number of jail beds and adult corrections facilities. Not well-versed in that topic, but I hope we're not jailing people with minor offenses who are not dangerous to the community. I know there's a whole separate jail review going on. Similarly, I'm happy to see factors mentioned of alternative programs and treatment diversion programs, to ensure we're not jailing people who just need other kinds of assistance. Thank you.
Nora Weaver.
Greetings, County Council. My name is Nora Weaver. I work at ITech Energy here in Bellingham, Washington. ITech is the largest manufacturer of solar modules in Washington State, as you may well be aware. First, I'd like to thank the County Council for passing your resolution in the last meeting in support of House Bill 2346, which would extend consumer financial incentives for renewable energy acquisition in Washington State. The current incentive package, set to expire in June, has helped to offer Washington consumers a four- to seven-year return on an investment for going solar. Since passage in 2005, these incentives have been responsible for stellar growth in the Washington solar industry, allowing more and more homes and businesses to go solar and creating green jobs, especially locally. In ITech's first full year of production, in 2012, we built two megawatts, which means around 8,000 solar modules that entire year. When I started in 2014, we had 15 employees, we now have over 100, and we're building 8,000 modules a month. And this is largely due to the wonderful incentives that our state has.
I'm sorry, I have to, I have to stop you and ask you, are you testifying on Chapter Four?
Yeah, I am. I'm getting to that pretty quickly here.
Okay, I couldn't quite get.
Yeah, sorry about that. So as you may know, the incentive bill is currently kind of in jeopardy, and what I am asking, I guess, is that whether it fails or goes forward, and if it goes forward strong, that we need to create, you know, a local incentivization for not only solar, but other forms of these energies. And I think that the Chapter Four facilities, capital facilities, could address this in many ways. I haven't picked it apart yet, but I think that we could locally really support these industries. So regarding the comp plan, I ask the county to seek to promote clean energy production and installations in Watcom County in some fashion, incentivize the county to bring more renewable energy businesses here to grow a local green economy, and identify and remove any barriers that may hinder this process. And I would like to ask that the comp plan sets a target for the county government operations to become carbon neutral by 2030. Thank you.
Thank you. Edward Yuri.
Good evening. My name is Edward Yuri. I'm a Bellingham resident, and I work in the Clean Energy Program at Resources for Sustainable Communities. And as you know, among other things, we are advocating for specific policies in the Comprehensive Plan that will move Watcom County towards energy security by, as Nora had just, you know, mentioned, removing barriers that may exist for clean energy production, and incentivizing renewable energy industry to set its roots here in the county, and to set a target for the county municipal government operations to become carbon neutral by 2030. And we think this can be, this is an achievable goal. Watcom County has an opportunity to lead the way in our state towards the transition to a clean energy infrastructure, achieving energy security, cutting utility costs for consumers long-term, and growing a base of good-paying jobs for energy production and installation and maintenance, just like ITech and some other businesses here in town are already growing. And with these aims in mind, I submitted a recommendation last month for a new goal in Chapter Four, that would simply ensure that construction or renovation of capital facilities are designed to meet or exceed goals or standards that were resolved in the Climate Protection and Energy Conservation Action Plan that Watcom County adopted in 2007. And I think capital facilities ought to be held to the highest standards, consistent with goals in place to reduce greenhouse gas pollution, as resolved by the county and as well as state and federal governments, so. Furthermore, I hope, you know, we can see adoption of a new climate action plan in 2017 that could establish new targets that meet or exceed existing goals for climate impact reduction. And so as to continue, you know, striving for progress in this area, I hope that you would also consider establishing a new citizen advisory committee with community stakeholders represented to oversee formation of this new climate action plan in 2017 and beyond, and to recommend updates to our comprehensive plan, so as to align our development regulations with realistic, responsible, and ambitious goals to be set forth in the future. And so I thought the capital facilities might be an appropriate place to insert a goal and policy like this, at least as it directly applies to capital facilities. I know that that hasn't been addressed as of yet, but I'd invite you to maybe, if time permits, take another look at it. And when it comes to formation of the committee, I realize this doesn't need to be in Chapter Four, this could come through some other means. But it also could be an appropriate place to insert it. And we will be making comments, of course, in other chapters with the same goals in mind, utilities, of course, but yeah, I just thank you for considering this. I also brought copies of the letter from last month, just so you can take another look at it, and we'll be following up with some more supporting documents and information, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Edward. That's the end of the sign-ups. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak?
First, I'd like to urge you to please adopt impact fees. There's discussion in this chapter about financing issues and different ways to come up with money to pay for things. I really think the people that are responsible for increasing costs should be the people that are largely responsible for paying those costs. I'm really tired, as a taxpayer, of subsidizing the costs of growth, so I hope you'll please give that some serious consideration. And then I wanted to talk about policy goal 4L, ensure that capital facilities provide protection for threatened and endangered fish and wildlife species. That doesn't even meet the minimum standards required under the GMA. Under the GMA, you're required to protect federal species, which are the threatened and endangered species, state species, which are priority species and habitat, and then local species, which we designate. So this is only requiring protection for federal species, and it's actually the standard that's used by our Parks Department, and it's not adequate. So, that really needs to be changed, so. And actually, what I would prefer is it for it to say that we protect biodiversity, because it's really important that we have a healthy food chain, and that means that even common abundant species need to be protected. But if you're not going to do that at a minimum to be compliant with the GMA, you should have the federal, the state, and the local species in there. The next thing is, I'm looking at the policy goal. Fish and wildlife habitat should be carefully considered when selecting projects for the six-year capital improvement program. I mean, what does that mean? To me, it doesn't say anything. And the fact is, we're not protecting our wildlife, which means we need to be more specific about what we need to do, because these policies, while they're broad, they need to have enough direction that they're, that something's being accomplished. And so what we really want to talk about is protecting the functions and values of critical areas. And one of the functions and values that are served by habitat conservation areas is biodiversity. So what we should do is do a habitat analysis and a report, so that we know what species are there. That would be something very specific. And I know that there was $70,000 left from the Critical Area Ordinance project that was not spent, and I think this would be a very good use of that money, is if we could hire somebody to go in and do a fish and wild, a fish and habitat, fish and species and habitat review and report, so we know exactly what's there, and we establish a baseline standard. We want to talk about having a baseline standard, and then monitoring it over time to make sure there's no net loss. So I'd ask you, please, there's other provisions, I don't have time to go into, there's three policies, all of them are inadequate. I'm sorry, I haven't had time to address them, I've been working on the CAO. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Anyone else like to speak on Chapter Four? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and I want to thank everyone for their comments this evening, and just want you to know that written comments will, are still being accepted, so if you have any, please feel free to submit them to the council office. We're moving on now to the open session. During open session, audience members will have up to three minutes to address the council on any issue relevant to county business, other than what we've already had a public hearing on. Before beginning, please state your name and topic of interest for the record. And we thank you in advance for your cooperation. If you have anything to hand out to council members, please include the clerk, and come on forward. Anyone that would like to speak during the open session?
I'd like to talk about air quality. You know, the policy that I saw, I believe it was in the environmental comp plan section, said that we were just going to allow the Northwest Clean Air Agency to handle that. And they haven't been doing a really adequate job, and I know that personally. I looked, first of all, we have a problem here in Watcom County with air quality, and it's not being talked about. There is no place you can move in the county and get away from wood smoke. And I've talked to a number of people, I know a lot of people love it, there's just as many people that don't. I looked for a year and a half to find housing where I could not be exposed to wood smoke. There's no place in this county. And wood smoke is increasing, because people are not only using it to heat wood, they're using it for recreation in the summer, in their backyards for fire pits. And the Clean Air Agency does very little. I contacted them before I moved, and they told me there weren't any problems they were aware of in my area. There are, in fact, problems in my area, and their attitude was, you know, this is a cultural value, we can't tell people not to burn wood. And I said, what can you do to protect people like me that are literally dying from smoke? And they had nothing to say. So, it's not just me. The Clean Air Agency has issued something a few months ago stating that wood smoke and transportation, we're talking about particulates, are the greatest health impact Watcom County residents face. That's a pretty big deal, and it's something that I really think we need to be addressing, and there's things that we can do more proactively than what the Clean Air Agency is doing. For instance, under the International Fire Code that the county's adopted, the fire department is allowed to put out fires that are causing a health hazard or inconvenience, or a property hazard or inconvenience to people in the area. So they- So they do have the ability to go in, instead of me having to go to the hospital because I can't breathe, they have the ability to go in and have a neighbor put out a bonfire in the summer. There's other types of technology that we can be looking at, we really need to be looking at things like ductless heat pumps, because not only do they take care of heat, they take care of air conditioning, and they're cheaper to operate than burning wood. So people were in here talking about alternative energy, let's talk about this kind of alternative technology and things we can do to make the county healthier with air, thank you.
Brad Swanson, Belcher Swanson Law Firm, 900 Dupont Street. Can you hear me now? It's a bad Verizon commercial, sorry. We represent the U Street Associates, Hillside Associates, Westpac Management, Inc., Tal LLC, Frank and Sandra Molyatt &amp; Jane M LLC. The purpose for my remarks tonight is to discuss the letter that was submitted by our clients today, and their present growth management hearings board challenge. As the letter explains, our clients have been working with the city and the county for the last several years on reinstating their property in the urban growth area. Until very recently, our clients were pretty optimistic that they were going to get reinstated in the UGA, however, now it's not so clear, and as a result, our clients have authorized us to move forward with our growth management hearings board challenge. Moreover, if our clients don't receive, aren't afforded the relief they request at the board, they're likely to seek further relief at Superior Court or beyond. To remind the council of the most recent settlement offer from last fall, our clients asked just to have their 82 acres, the properties that they own reinstated in the UGA. This is a far cry from the entire 500-acre South U Street Urban Growth Area Reserve, and depending on how zoning is applied to that 82 acres, you could have from 600 to 1,200 more residents. That certainly helps resolve some of the housing shortfalls that we all know and have been testified to previously with regard to our comp plan. More importantly, it's projects like these that give our Wachem County residents housing options and increases affordability. Projects we expect to see there will look a lot like the South Hills Community, which is right next door. Our clients inform us that they have spoken with city council folk about the recent settlement opportunity, and they've received it pretty well, so there's still time, and we believe that is still a viable option. Interestingly, the timing with respect to the hearing, with the hearings board, this council's adoption of its ordinance and a decision from the board on our client's challenge creates a bit of a, creates a bit of a problem. The hearing is scheduled for June 16th, this county has to adopt its ordinance on the comp plan on June 28th, and the board must make its ruling on our challenge on July 28th. So within a month of you adopting your new comprehensive plan, it's possible that all that work will be undone by a favorable ruling for our clients by the board. There's still time to settle this matter, it's only 82 acres, as the council, and if settlement is not achieved, our clients will be forced to litigate, so thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
Anyone else? Come on forward.
Hello, counsel, my name is Cody Bosch, and Bellingham is my hometown, and I've lived across the country, in Boston, in Portland, and Seattle, or rather, San Francisco, going to college, and I grew up on a dairy farm in Custer, but I also lived in Bellingham, and my grandparents raised me out in the county, and on a five-generation farm, and I think that we have an extraordinary opportunity as we grow into a period of seemingly explosive growth to set precedent and example for the rest of the state and also the rest of the country as it grows, goes into periods of exponential growth, and making an environment in Wachem County and in Bellingham that is hospitable to green technology and green industries, and also ideas of sustainability and green ways and alternative transportations and whatnot. I don't think that business interests and quality of life are mutually exclusive, I think we have an extraordinary opportunity to look at urban growth models and the relationship between urban, suburban, and rural, to come up with a vision that, like I say, sets example. And with the waterfront project, I fear, I lived in Portland, and I saw what happened with the Pearl District down there in Northwest area, and it's an incredible example of taking an area of urban blight and kind of a wasteland and creating a very capital-rich environment that also has substantial quality of life, but also in the end, it is high rises and condos, and my art college actually was the first kind of a missionary in a cinderfield down there, and it set precedent to create this thriving area that's very costly to live, but I think the waterfront, if we look at sustainable technologies, if we look about having the university have a presence in the waterfront as it grows, such as creating a marine biology department, like Oregon State University has, and/or doing experiments with the renewable technology groups up at Western, such as like tidal power and wind and the different companies that are working with solar. So I hope that as we grow into this period of growth, that we really look at how to maintain our quality of life and what we love about Bellingham and Wachem County, and look to that first as we work with business and capital to come up with a consensus to move forward, because otherwise we'll find ourselves living in a place that has left us behind, and what we love will be in the past, so I hope we can move forward to that thought. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to us during open session? Seeing no one, we will close the open session and move into the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, the Wachem County Finance and Administrative Services Committee met today, and we considered items one through nine on the council's consent agenda, these all met the recommendation of 3-0 for approval, and I so move.
Okay, we have a motion from Finance to accept items one through nine, do we have any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, there was an ordinance amending the 2016 Wachem County Budget Sixth Request in the amount of $115,620, this also received a vote of 3-0, and I so move.
We have a motion? Before us, any discussion? Seeing none, may we have the roll call, please?
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sidoo?
Yes.
Carl Weimer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, the other item was, we received a quarterly finance report from the county Executive's Office, and I'm pleased to report that projected revenue is currently running at 99% of budget, and expenses are running at, I think, if I remember correctly, 91% of budget. Bravo to the county staff, I think they've done an excellent job this quarter.
Yeah, thank you.
There's no other business from Finance.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Brown. The next is introduction items, I do want to point out that on item number three, discussion of an ordinance proposing various minor amendments to the Wachem County Code is being reintroduced in the pink copy you have here, it just shows the changes we talked about today to Exhibit B and Exhibit K, and the rest is the same. So anyway, with that, do we have a motion to introduce these three items?
Also move.
Second. We have a motion and a second discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Committee reports, we had no natural resources today, public works.
Well, our first presentation was removed, somebody got sick or something. The other one was an update on a proposed project to construct a lighthouse at Lighthouse Marine Park in Point Roberts, and our Parks Director is going to be meeting with the Lighthouse Group, and they're going to come up with a white paper that's going to give us more understanding of what's going to happen. And then we did have a briefing and discussion on Comprehensive Plan, Chapter Six, Transportation.
Great, thank you. Do we have anything from planning?
Yeah, we had two items in planning, one was the amendments that we just introduced on Title 20, and the second one was an ongoing discussion about how to regulate under Title 20 vacation rental units, and that'll be a discussion that will return to us.
Okay, do we have any other committee reports? Seeing none, do we have other items of business? Seeing none, council member updates?
Nothing, nothing to report.
Mr. Chair, yesterday I had the pleasure of listening to Vice President Biden give a presentation, and I will just throw out that he said, and to put it in context, Vice President Biden started his political career as a county council member, and he said he's been to Afghanistan three times, and he remembers doing zoning, he'd rather go back to Afghanistan.
Is that it? That's all your advice, okay. I have nothing, Ms. Brenner?
Just to say, there was a terrible terrorist attack today, the flags are half-mast, and I wish I had better news than that, but I think we should at least think about what's going on in this world.
Nothing.
Okay, with no other business?
Were we going to talk about the?
We already did.
Oh, okay.
About what?
What?
About availability, yeah, I'll have that for you in a minute.
Okay.
10:30.
With no other business before the council, we stand adjourned.